All right, good evening, everyone. I call the, uh, the meeting to order. Tonight is the fifteenth of April of the Village of Buchanan Planning Board meeting. Would you all rise for the pledge allegiance, except for you, George, you're driving?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the state of America and to the republic. For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, is there any additions or deletions to the minutes from the panel? Rosemary, I believe we're gonna send a copy to the previous chairman in case he has any changes to do.
Yes.
All right, can I have a motion to accept the minutes as they are read as of now?
Motion.
Motion.
I lead motion, second by Jennifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So move. Okay, um, did the village receive any paperwork from the applicant as from the last letter that, uh, George Palmer sent out?
You mentioned plans?
Now, besides the plans, from the letter that, uh, George emailed out to the lawyer and to the, uh, applicant? Uh, the memorandum?
Is that the one dated, uh, March tenth?
Yes, correct. Have we received anything from them in writing?
I have received nothing.
Uh, Chair- Chairman David Wright is on here as well. Uh, he just got in, so, um, he, if you want him to address that as well, he can unmute. David, you wanna unmute yourself in case you wanna respond to the question?
David, are you there?
We're hooking on it. There we go.
Oh, there you go.
Miracle of technology. Yeah, Mr. Palmer was kind enough to, uh, send me that memo. Uh, I did receive it on, uh, April five and, uh, which was the date, the deadline for submission of written materials for this meeting. So I did actually have a draft of something, but I didn't submit it since it would have been, uh, tardy. And, uh, I lost communication with my client sometime around that point. I had not communicated with him since today. I was able to speak to him on the telephone, actually, from his, uh, he's, uh, bed in, in bed still, from his, uh, illness. So that's, I didn't even know plans were submitted. I found out from JB, from Mr. Hernandez today. He had actually submitted, uh, revised elevations. I haven't seen him. But I understand that maybe that's something the board would like to discuss with him at this meeting.
All right, so, so basically, I would like to have, uh, Peter and Brian cook over what they have found on the site because I did visit the site. I was able to go up the rock wall very easily and there, there was a, a lot of, uh, gravel and wood chips down and a lot of trees were removed. And then after, uh, Brian and Peter Cook discuss what they had, then we'll go back to George and go over the memorandum, what we need to go forward with.
Uh, I have in my position here, uh, a survey marked November eleventh, twenty twenty, and the map was prepared November thirteenth, twenty twenty, signed by, uh, Daniel Meritz, land surveyor. The, the survey that I have shows all of the trees that are, or were there, they're not there now. Uh, anything over an eight-inch tree required a permit. And there are thirty-six inch trees, fourteen inch trees, sixteen inch trees, fourteens, twenties, sixteens, all over the property, and, uh, they were cut down without benefit of any permit. Uh, the second thing is that the survey shows topographically the property as it rises up towards the top. And it does not delineate any path, walkway, driveway, anything to that effect. Uh, it's an incline as it goes up and they're marked out every two feet and there's no, um, changing of the topographical lines on the survey. So the, a lot of work was created over there and that roadway, uh, is now, I can show a picture thereof if, if you can see this, I'm not sure. Uh, it shows a distinctive roadway that's been cut in and it's been, uh, layered with chips. And one of the concerns is that it was not there before. Uh, has been stated that it was a walkpath, but there's nothing visible on the survey. Uh, that is quite recent. It's only a few months old. So that, that was created. Uh, that, that's something you would need to know about the site itself. Uh, as, uh, there was supposed to be a fence at the top of the property, uh, which was supposed to shield the neighbors back there where they used to have a number of trees and walls. Uh, that fence is not shown on the new plans. Uh, it doesn't exist. There's nothing there. The plans show that the, uh, the building, they did listen to the board about the appearance of the building. They did minimize the staircase appearance that was on the left side of the property. And, uh, they did change the windows and the door, uh, so that it, it looks more like a commercial establishment rather than a house. But, uh, my, my main concern is that there was a tremendous amount of changes done to the site, uh, without benefits of any permits at all.
So what is the course of action as, as far as the village? Do these changes that were done without permits?
Uh, normally that could be a fine, uh, setup, uh, legalization of a permit that should actually be filed. Uh, the only thing that's accomplished so far is that after they've done all of this change of photography uh, and opened up the hills and took down the trees, uh, is that they put chips down. Uh, they were allowed to do that to help stabilize the property. But, uh, that does not in any way legalize what they've done to the property. That just stabilizes it in its current condition.
Yeah, but when I visited the, uh, the site on the north side on the White Street where the driveway goes up to the building, uh, that all the rocks over there were dislodged from when they pulled the trees out. So all that would have to be stabilized too.
Correct. And also there were, uh, a rock wall that the roadway seemed to go near the edge of. And there were other rock walls that were up there, stone retaining walls as called out by the surveyor, uh, that are not there any longer. So there was a lot of things that were changed. There were a lot of trees up on the top. Uh, twelve inch trees, fourteen inch trees, twin trees, twelve inch, another fourteen inch. They're all gone. Uh, all those trees were also cut down, not just the ones on the slope.
So in your, in your, uh, professional pu- opinion, what, what needs to be done to stabilize the site the rest of the way so that way we can proceed?
Well, I don't believe that roadway belongs there. Uh, it wasn't there in November. It's there now. Uh, I think that roadway should be infilled and appropriate amount of trees, uh, put back on the slope in order to stabilize it. Uh, they've stabilized it for the moment for, uh, soil erosion, uh, to minimize the amount of, uh, rills that would be caused by water running down the slope. Uh, but it still has not made it go back to where it was. It's just stabilizing the soil from eroding.
Has any of the other board members visited the site since then or?
No, but I do have a question. Um, Peter, uh, on my property, and I'm just making a comparison with that, uh, with what the deer have been doing, there is no, uh, undercover. So when it comes to erosion, there is no, what is the best way to prevent that erosion since the deer eat everything, the, all the undergrowth?
I think George Palmer would be the best person to answer that question.
Okay.
How to stabilize your soil.
George, are you?
Yeah, sure. Um, what we have to, uh, indicated to the applicant was to, uh, mulch. Mulch is the best thing you can do in the middle of winter because nothing grows. So that's the only, actually, that's the only thing you can do at this point in time, and that's actually what's in the code to do as well.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead.
Uh, I think one of the things, according to my notes from last time, that we were hoping to see this time was a steep slopes analysis of the percentage grades, uh, on, on the area. Excuse me. I don't know if that was submitted because I haven't seen the plans that were submitted. But is there something in, in there that was submitted to you?
No, all we, all we received was the updated plans that you received, same thing. But, uh, last meeting, we were looking for the original D E C permit to clean up the property. And, and also the, uh, the survey and the steep slope analysis. But, but you haven't seen it either?
No, sir.
Okay, the building department is in possession of the D E C permit to, uh, remediate the front of the property at the nine A and property, uh, property lines. Uh, but that was the only area that the D E C was involved in. They were not involved in the, uh, the slope or the higher ground area in the rear.
That's, that's correct.
So we didn't have a, they weren't issued a, a permit from the village to clean up the top of that hill or the, the old rock wall or that hill?
Uh, no, nothing on record and nothing from the D E C about those areas.
So George, how, how do we move forward with what, uh, needs to be done besides the wood chips for stabilization?
So what we, uh, indicated to the applicants in, uh, design professional was to submit to us a steep slopes analysis. On page two of their uh, recent submission, they had something on there, uh, about analysis, but it didn't comply with the code. So we informed their divi- design professional to resubmit and address steep slopes specifically and then come back to this board.
Okay, so we, so we still need the deep slope analysis and then far as of the, uh, Mr. Cook, what else did we also need from them?
Uh, well, there was a fence that, that's been proposed and they've asked the building department a number of times to allow them to put up a fence. Uh, we have no fence design, no fence placement on the site plan. Uh, so they're asking about a fence that we don't have any information on.
Is that the fence on top of the hill?
That's the fence that they're choosing to put on the top of the hill.
Yeah, because, uh, what I'm understanding, the police had to go there from, uh, the person that lived at one seventy-five Lindsay because they were going through her driveway again?
Uh, from what I understand, yes. Uh, according to, uh, Mr. Martin, uh, the representative for Mr. Sarmiento, is that, uh, he walked up there. He did not drive a vehicle this time or a dump truck or anything to that effect.
Yeah, they were using where Barrows going up and down the lady's driveway and she called them.
I understand it's something to that effect, yes, sir.
Okay, so, all right, so we need to head from the plankton next, uh, meeting is the deep slope analysis and then you're gonna have to get with the building inspectors to make sure that you stabilize all the issues that need to be corrected?
Understood.
Or we can even proceed with that. Is there any, uh, other questions from the board?
Um, if I may just address the board for a second? Yeah, um, we did, I mean, the last time we met with the board, um, when we were trying to submit and we submit to Mr. Palmer, uh, we started to work on this deep slope analysis, but it wasn't completed. Like you said, we need to review it for, uh, code compliance. But, uh, I believe that the last time we were talking about, uh, to proceeded that, to continue the dialogue, we did work on the, um, change in the elevation of the building. We did visit the center of Buchanan, see how the other, uh, buildings were, are designed and we tried to, uh, comply with that. Um, we started working with the materials, the finished materials with the client, but we did add larger windows to be more commercial and we did relocate the stairs from the front or the side of the building to the rear, so it's not as visible from, uh, all of the posed road.
Did any of the board members have any questions on the changes to the plan that they submitted?
I mean. I have some, I have, oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer, go ahead.
I mean, I, I did see the elevations. I do definitely think that they looked better at the ground level and definitely the stairs in the back is um, much more pleasing on the eye. I mean, the only weird thing is, is like when you walk in, you walk into a bedroom. I don't really care. I just, I assume you're gonna, I assume you're gonna relay out the apartment so you don't walk in, into a bedroom, but I guess you're a work in progress.
Yes.
Jeff, I have a question for Mr. Hernandez in regards to your shrubbery. Smooth sumac is an invasive, although indigenous plant. Uh, you've got a lot of smooth sumac and I wondered why they chose that plant. It's, it can grow ten to twelve, twenty feet because I have that on my property also. It is invasive, it grows, and I know that you guys, you know, they will handle that, but how tall will they allow those shrubs to grow around the back?
Um, I will, um, definitely go, you know, talk to our consultants about the landscaping and we will get back to you on that. So the sumac, well, yeah, we have nineteen of them, okay.
Right. I mean, there's a lot of them and they are invasive, although they are indigenous also to the area. Um, it just didn't make sense that you've got ma- uh, mountain laurel, I believe, or a very pretty plant next to it as a shrub. Um, and I presume that that will all be kept at a certain height.
Okay. Yes, um, I will look into that while we have nineteen of them. And, uh, I know there was an effort to try to use, uh, native planting for the Wachita County listing, so, um, I wanna see, I will request information, how invasive and who can modify, modify that.
I also want to tell you that deer love smooth sumac if they can get a hold of it. Um, so you've got an issue with deer there with that particular plant. Also arbivites up on the top, uh, against, um, the plateau. I believe you have a number of arbivites for there, the tall growing arbivites. They are also being eaten by the deer. So, um, just to let you know, uh, if we, I would ask another question, is if in, in the site plan, that we can make some kind of stipulation if any of those shrubs or trees or anything are missing, that they get replanted or replaced with something that is not, that might be deer proof? Just to keep the, the, uh, fence, uh, with the arbivites up on Lindsay Avenue that the group, the two houses at least had joined his property or butt against it, um, as a barrier. So just my thoughts on trees and what I go through.
Um, when you say, um, when you say, uh, maintenance, they usually, they sustain the note that, you know, uh, after a year, they will have to be replaced if they're damaged or you s- you're thinking more, uh, make sure that five years from now, we still have the same amount of trees and there's no issues with that?
Well, I would hope that the property would look very close to what it originally started as. And, um, I can tell you that the saliva off the deer will, uh, create. Uh, it seems to kill part of the, uh, bushes. So I'm just, you know, I don't know that for a fact. I'm just, I'm observer of that. Uh, but I would hope that the maintenance of the building would be, uh, something that, uh, would continue from what it is in the beginning.
Okay.
Anyone else have any questions?
Oh, Jeff, you had one, uh, you had questioned the basement on the last, uh, meeting.
Yes, uh, because in the, in the past, that would, used to be a gas station.
Right.
And, and they had actually, uh, fuels spill into that basement. The one question is, were there sampling taken on the basement and all around the foundation?
Right.
And then the other question I had was on the plan, they don't show anything about the hot water boilers and, and the heating systems. Were that going in a different room or was that going in the basement? Then how were you gonna ventilate it outside?
Okay. Uh, the intention to put in the basement, I'm not sure about, uh, the data, if, you know, how much sampling was done. I know that, um, if I believe from, when my client advised me that when they bought the property, there was a clean bill on the, um, environmental there, so, uh, I will check with them and make sure we have that information.
Uh, Chairman.
Yes.
We did receive a, uh, information from a neighbor stating that on, on one of the weekends in the past, uh, cement trucks were there and they were pouring apparently a floor in the basement. So in order to do any samplings in the basement, they're gonna have to do some core drilling to get down through the cement that likewise did not have a permit.
Mr. Cook, did the, uh, D E C, uh, permit mention anything about benzene or gasoline in that cleanup or?
I only mentioned the fact that there was some remnants in the soil, uh, from a gasoline spill near the pumps up at the front. That was the only area that apparently, uh, they were concerned with, where the pumps used to be. And, uh, again, that was remediated.
Okay, because, uh, the information I got through Buchanan Firehouse is that, that the, the fluid from the gas pumps actually went into the basement.
Yes, I, I.
So, so I would definitely have, uh, some type of, uh, core sampling of the basement. And I don't know if they did any samplings around the foundation of the building to, to verify that it, it is clean, but, uh, if they did pour slab into the basement, that all that work shouldn't, should have stopped and shouldn't have went forward on that.
Yes, we only heard about it after the fact.
Chairman, this is Marcus. May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, since this is, this is, when, when you, we get to the building, just for safety concerns, uh, are you guys considering putting a sprinkler system in the building?
Um, we haven't done the code analysis for construction purposes, but I believe that building the size usually if we comply with the, uh, fire separation of sprinkler system would not be needed.
Okay, the only other question is Victor, our planners on, on the line, on Chairman, in case, I don't know if he has any comments, uh, ask the planner, we're going in this project as well. Thank you.
Um, the only other, the thing is, I agree with Peter. The building does look a lot more like a commercial structure, um, than it did before. Uh, the only other recommendation that we had was it'd be useful to indicate where signage would be located on the facade because that would also help identify it as a commercial property. Um, uh, you know, we'd like to see that, I, on the, uh, on the next set of plans.
Okay.
Uh, maybe I have a recommendation on our website. We have the, um, proposed overlay district that the village board is considering. In there is also design guidelines. Um, so maybe a suggestion to the people working on the project, take a look at the design guidelines to see, to make sure it meets our future goals as well. Uh, Victor, would you agree with that?
Yes, and, and if you can't, if you have trouble finding them, we can always send them directly to you as well.
Okay.
I have one more question, um, on the lighting. Uh, is there lighting up on the shed on that plateau if that is approved?
I don't think that, I don't think there's any, uh, like outdoor lighting or lighting inside the shed. I don't think there is any intent to have any outdoor lighting.
There's none proposed.
None proposed, yeah.
All right, on the, on the shed, the shed size is thirteen by twenty by what height?
Uh, surprisingly twelve feet in the peak.
Twelve feet? And you said there's gonna be power inside there or? That's undetermined right now.
Undetermined. I will have to talk to the client about that. But, and, well, it's just gonna be for a storage of the equipment, so, um, my first reaction will be no, but I will have to check and ensure with the client.
And have you guys discussed by the last recommendation to move that down to the lower lot? By where the, that rock wall comes down? Because that's what it, it's originally is a rock wall. It's not really a path, that everyone's calling a path?
Um, I have discussed with the client, but in the same, with Mr. Wright, I haven't, uh, having had a, you know, we had a brief meeting. We're trying to submit the elevation back to the board to continue the dialogue. So we hoping to, uh, be able to have a meeting with the client and discuss these points and that.
Is there any other questions or concerns by anyone?
Uh, the, uh, I, I'm not in a position to ask for anything, Mr. Chairman, since I don't know anything. Haven't received anything or seen anything in the last two weeks, but, uh, as of two weeks and one day ago, my client had asked me, uh, he said that there's apparently a blue tarp over the top of the building, which I can't imagine anyone finds very attractive. What he wanted to do is to secure the building, at least to just cover the, you know, replace the plywood as necessary and the shingles, not any building, anything like that. It would have to be done with a permit issued by Mr. Cook. And I said, well, why don't you start off by giving it to Mr. Cook and see what he says first of all? And then I'll raise it with the board and we have a court, uh, court session on April twenty-seven. There's a stay, a, a stop work order in effect there. Uh, and see if anybody objects or has any problem with, with, uh, putting a roof on to preserve the building and get rid of the tarp.
Where are we, uh, with the court actions? Did you guys go back to court?
We're going back on April twenty-seventh and the judge, I think, was looking for some, I, I had advised the court, I, I thought maybe we would have some recommendations by this point on stabilization and remediation because those kind of things, you know, could be part of a settlement in, in a court case. Um, but we don't, I, I don't think there's an agreed steep slopes analysis yet, so it's kind of not, not in the cards. I don't know what the judge is gonna do on the twenty-seventh, but, uh, I know the prosecutor was asking to have a trial date in May, so that's about all I know there.
Uh, Brian, Peter, what, what do you think about them, uh, fixing the roof to stabilize the building so that way the water doesn't deteriorate anything further?
Well, at this point, other than the aesthetics of the blue tarp, apparently it's effective. It's keeping the water out. Though, you know, so, uh, if, I don't believe at this point in time there is a, a rush or anything to be expeditiously accomplished, uh, that the tarp is accomplishing that at this point. There's also talk of the removal of the canopy, which was part of the roofing. They were, normally the two items are put together at the same time, um, but until the planning board makes a determination on the site, uh, changes to the building that at the moment is not being impacted other than the appearance of the blue tarp, uh, I think that, that can wait at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, just quick, um, if there's a stop work order, I would have to agree with the cooks. That unless there's some indication that there's some sort of an emergency here, I mean, you should abide by the stop work order or, you know, you could ask the court.
Right, which they have an appointment coming up with the court date, correct. Uh, Mr. Wright, do you know if they have copies of the trip tickets of all the gravel and the dirt and the wood chips that they brought to the site?
Uh, I was told they didn't bring any gravel to the site, but, uh, I know they brought wood chips.
There were piles of gravel. I mean, that's what's, that's what's going up that rock wall is gravel and have wood chips on it. So just make sure that we have copies of the trip tickets of the deliveries.
I'll make a note of that.
Thank you, sir. Any other further questions? All right, so then, uh, we will carry this over till next month. And by then you should have your, your court date and we should be able to, uh, have some resolution. And by then you should have your court date and we should be able to have some resolution on this matter. George, you have any other additional things that you have to put out for the memo?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there any other issues with this applicant from the board? Okay. All right, Mr. Wright, Mr. Hernandez, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, since we have no other issues on the 3176. Stephanie, you have anything?
On this particular application?
Yes.
No, I would just ask the, if George, I know you're swamped, but it might be helpful before the next meeting if you could sort of revise your memo, let us know what has or hasn't been provided? Because that would help prepare for the meeting, I think.
Yes, it seemed that there was a lag between the plans going to the lawyer and he doesn't understand what's happening there. So we have to try to do a little better diligent of getting a memo updated and getting stuff back from them to the village, I would say.
Yeah, I mean, for the court reasons, it would have been, you know, helpful probably for them to have given us a steep slopes analysis. I'm not really understanding why we don't have that, but, so I thought maybe if George updated that memo, because that's a lengthy, what's there, 50 items or something on it? It's kind of hard to keep track of and know in advance, you know, are there 40 of them that have been provided and only 10 outstanding? You know what I mean? It would make for this meeting, I think, to be more cohesive.
Yes, there's 53 items. So George, is there a way that you can update this memo?
Actually, usually the applicant responds with a memo that indicates how they've addressed all those items. And we haven't received that yet.
How is, how is, how is the communication from you to the Mr. Wright? Is that the procedure that it goes through?
Well, actually, we go through the design professional. So the design professional, well, actually, what usually happens, it goes to the planning board. They send us the plans, we review them and we send a memo out to the board and the design professional at the same time.
Mr. Hernandez is still on the line too, he might want to be able to address that as well.
Yeah, we will provide Mr. Palmer with a memo. But like I said before, when we left the meeting the last time and we need to talk, we need to be able to have, I will talk to our client and Mr. Wright to make sure that we have a communication of the information that we're receiving. And we will provide, we were just trying to, our feeling was after the last meeting that there was, it's a broad amount of work to be done. And in order to continue the dialogue, we're just working on the elevations and basically the building. So we will, I mean, the list is long and we have a lot of stuff that needs to be addressed and we work on those, but we are also looking to get other consultants involved. So that was, you know, we're trying to address all these different items.
Understood, thank you.
No problem.
So when do you think that that information is gonna go back to the village of Buchanan?
Well, we have, I will follow up with our consultant about the steep slopes, make sure that that's taken care of. And that's the, it seems like to be the priority. And we do have to have a meeting with our client to make sure we understand some of the concerns that the board has, what our proposal is to rectify that. And then at the end, we need to have the client accept those from us.
Okay, so I guess we will adjourn on this issue until next month?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Tracy, can I have a second?
Okay.
Second by Jennifer, thank you.
Hey, have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye bye, good night.